Thank you very much. Dell Smitherman, then Ronald Bellmore, and Sefredo Romano.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ronald Bellmore. I have an open letter to the board. My name is Ronald Bellmore. I am a United States Marine veteran, working man, family man. I've been living at Lafayette Pointing Apartments in the Bronx for 19 years. I am here today out of necessity not to be homeless. City government has adopted a privatization system thereby creating homelessness. Over 60,000 homeless families in New York right now.
Did you maybe turn it on? Did you check the switch? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the clock has stopped, no worries.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, single mothers working two jobs just to keep up in rent, and no time for their children at home. Seniors in their golden years worried about food on the table or paying their rent. Working people paying 60% to 70% of their salary in rent. Permanent MCI increases on top of annual rent increases. This is nothing more than economic enslavement. I ask the question, is this America? If we could fashion a society that has humanity for its citizens, then we could have a true democracy with equality, fairness, and justice for all. I am asking the RGB not only to roll back the rents, but to put in place real legislation to protect working people of all income. Affordable decent housing is a fundamental human right for all people, not a privilege for those who can afford to pay. In closing, I would like to say, in the words of the great late John F. Kennedy, his words are needed today. We all breathe the same air. We all cherish our children's future, and we all inhabit this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony and thank you for your service. Howie Ravikoff, then Sefredo Romano, Shapen Nazaj.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident and homeowner here in the Bronx. I present to you my real estate taxes artificially high because the real estate taxes on rent stabilized buildings are artificially low. Taxes are artificially low because rents for rent stabilized apartments are artificially low. Rent stabilized apartment rents are below market, simply put. Yet all of the costs associated with those units are market rate. Insurance, fuel, water, repairs, building services, all market rate. All costs associated with those units, market rate. The rent on those units, below market rate. If the state wants to mandate a housing stock that's below market rate, the state should reduce the costs associated with those units. In doing so, the value of those buildings will increase as the taxes collected on those buildings will increase without raising the rate, by the way. If the state wants to maintain housing that's below market, the state should make up the difference between the market rate rent and the market rate cost. Since you, the Rent Guidelines Board cannot do that. That's a logical request, that's beyond your authority. I request you give the landlords and in turn the taxpayers throughout the city the highest rent increase available and begin narrowing this ridiculous gap and begin narrowing this ridiculous gap between below market rent rates and market rate costs. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If we can hear the next testimony, Sefredo Romano, then Shapen Nazaj, and Joseph Sapata.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
If everyone could quiet down, we really would like to hear Mr. Romano's...
Roman.
Romano.
Yes, um, Behave a Casa, I'm very happy to let you know that. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to express my view. On June 9th, 2015, we made history by being able to march to Albany, the capital, and let our voice be heard loud and clear. But the rent law must be reformed to save housing for everyone to live with dignity and respect. We also must end 421A that helps senseless subsidize for luxury developments. We need regulations not subsidize for developers with millions spent to subsidize luxury development housing. While working class and middle class taxpayers are forced to subsidize luxury development who are building apartments, the majority of New York City residents can never be able to afford any of them to live in here. The law are not changed a lot. We are leaving open shelters or the street no time sooner. We hope soon something be done. As a veteran retired, I must tell you, I got a new lease coming up to me. I pay $1,100 rent, and the new lease gave me a $75 increase. I call and ask him why, he says, there's nothing we can do about it. So God help us, let God be with us. Thank you.
Shapen Nazaj, Joseph Sapata, and Lucille Robinson. Shapen Nazaj, Joseph Sapata, you're done. This one works.
Yeah, sorry. How you doing? I'm a landlord, also I have a property management company. I deal with a lot of buildings throughout northern Manhattan, throughout the Bronx.
Do you want to pick up the microphone?
I deal with a lot of properties that are throughout northern Manhattan, throughout the Bronx. Some areas are a little bit better than others, meaning high crime areas. I heard a few tenants out here say that, you know, the conditions throughout their buildings. I just want to remind people that, you know, it's two different topics. A lot of tenants, you know, you say people are breaking your doors, they're spitting on the floors, they're trashing the buildings, basically. Well, those are the people, those are the tenants that are doing those, and those are the landlord's money, that is the landlord's money that they're spending to fix up these properties. Well, let me speak. Last year, you guys gave a very embarrassing rate hike of 1% and a 2.75% increase. This year, you know, we'd like to see some sort of increase of about 3%, maybe 5% increase. At the same time, throughout history where...
If everyone could please let everyone testify, we want to hear everyone's testimony, please.
Throughout history, when, you know, the economy wasn't great, there were minimums of like 2% for one year, 4% for a two-year. And I think those are like the minimum increases that you guys should come down to. Yes, fuel costs have been lower this year, but that has allowed landlords to put their money back into their buildings and correct issues such as leaks, minor repairs that don't... that landlords won't benefit from a MCI or any sort of additional rent increase. And let me also just, one last word here, since you guys booed me. I know, I'll get a few more seconds here. I just wanted to let you guys know that last year because of your embarrassing rent increase, you guys look across...
If we can let him finish his testimony, please.
I let go of very good superintendents because we had to cut back. And if you guys give that embarrassing rent increase once again, landlords will have no choice but to cut back. That means we'll have to fire people, we will have to do minimum repairs.
Please let him finish his testimony.
And then your buildings are going to be in the same conditions that you guys say that they are in. All right? Sorry.
Thank you. Joseph Sapata.
That's all right.
Mr. Sapata.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If everyone could please, please let each person testify. It's really important that we be able to hear everyone's story, thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, everybody, I'm glad everybody's here and the board. I've been a longtime resident of the Bronx and been here since the 70s, and I've seen the changes. And, you know, this reminds me of the 70s when everybody left and they abandoned the buildings, everybody left New York, and they started burning down the buildings to collect insurance because they didn't have any, anybody in those buildings. So they were like, well, let's burn them down, we'll get the money, and then we'll be able to build elsewhere. And that's what they did. So we're facing something similar now. For a long time, these crises of housing have existed, and for a long time, they've been ignored, people are looking the other way. It's time they start doing the right thing, okay? And balance the scales of justice that have been unbalanced for a long time. For 45 years, they have gotten, landlords have gotten an increase. They have always gotten an increase for 45 years. It's time, and thank God, last year you guys were able to keep it low, all right? Because I want the landlords to know something. If you don't have us, you have nothing, okay? If we don't pay you, you have nothing, okay? And a lot of you landlords, what you do is cry that you're hurting and all this, but yet you got vacant apartments because you don't want to rent them because you're not getting the rate you want, and that's wrong. You could, you could rent them and you don't. Landlords, there's one word that I have for you, it's called mismanagement. Learn how to manage. You get a rent, do the right thing, manage that, have money for everything that you need to repair your elevators, your boiler, all of that. We're paying our rents every month, yet you guys don't. Pay for increasing and doing what you need to do, okay? Now, on top of that, you tack on fees, MCI's, you take us to court all the time, exhausting our wallets, and then you're going to cry foul, all right? Petroleum was at an all-time low last year, okay? So you're saying that you're still hurting? Look, if you are saving on petroleum, save it for a rainy day. Did somebody ever tell you that? Okay? Do it, save it and budget everything because you're getting enough money. I have, in my complex, four buildings. There's 253 units in my building alone. We have 20 evictions every two weeks, 40 every month, and if you do everything, this guy is changing everybody out, okay? Is chasing everybody out. And for a long time, 80% of the tenants that he's taking to court, 80% of those tenants, okay, go there without a lawyer. But guess what? 80% of the landlords there have lawyers, okay? So that's unfair, that's not right, okay? Landlords have lobbyists, they have commercials. Who do we have? Our voice. Because we're supposed to have politicians and policymakers. They're broken. It's time to repair what needs to be done, okay? The scales of justice need to be done, okay? And about this maintenance, you guys are not doing the maintenance, okay? They cut down. We had eight people, they cut down to two people, and we can't even get elevators. It's ridiculous. No water. I got 39 mice that I had to catch myself because the landlord doesn't want to fumigate. Come on. So there's a lot that needs to be done, and they're singling out elderly, the disabled, they're singing out single moms, and that abuse has got to stop. Why are you going out after elderly? And the middle class has been choked out, okay, for too long. And I'm going to finish up and say that I know there's good landlords out there, okay? And for the bad landlords, I want you to know there's investors that are coming from Europe, from China, and if you can't deal with the property, they'll take it over in a heartbeat, and they'll be happy. And guess what? The tenants will be happy too because they're going to address the issues. And that's all we need to do. We need to put their hands on the fire and them to do what they need to do. And for them to have two books, what they give to the city and what they don't get to us, that's wrong. So that's all I have to say. We need a rollback, we needed a long time ago. For 45 years increase, we need a rollback yesterday, and we need it now.
Thank you, Mr. Sapata. Lucille Robinson, then Jeanette Ramos, Othella McCray, and Robert McCarthy. Ms. Robinson? Lucille Robinson? Jeanette Ramos? Jeanette Ramos? Othella McCray?
Jeanette is right there.
Oh. Okay. Ms. Ramos?
Okay, my name is Othella McCray, and I live at 940 Grand Concourse. I have a problem with the landlord stating all, every month, I'm behind in rent. And I have all the proof that I pay my rent every month, but it seems like they're always telling me I owe this amount of money, I owe this amount of money, I'm back in this rent, I'm back in that. I have all the receipts that I have paid my rent every month. To me, it's nothing but pure harassment. And I've been in this, I've been in this building since 1975 and paid my rent every month because I get a pension after working with the government for 30 years. And that's the first thing I do is pay my rent out my pension. So why is he harassing me all the time? I have a paper from landlord now, I have to go to court saying I owe this much money, I owe that money, and I owe nothing. Now I want to know why am I being harassed so much by 940 and Cooper Ray? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony and I'm...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roberta McCarthy, and I live at 940 Grand Concourse. I've been there since 1978, and I feel that my landlord is overcharging me. Right now, as I stand here, I'm paying 1971.60. And I'm a 69-year-old, I don't feel that I should have to pay that much money. And every year, until this January, he was charging me $100 for a lease, every year. Every year, minus was $100 added on to my rent. And I need someone to help me roll back this rent. I pay 1971.60. I'm only on social security and my husband. Where did I get this money to pay this kind of rent? So I really need help. I need someone to talk to, to guide me.
So ma'am, are you looking for legal help to find out if your rent is legal?
Yes.
Okay. So again, well, this board can't do anything about individual situations, but Harvey Epstein's a tenant attorney, and he'll give you a card. So if, again, if it looks like your rent is actually illegal, there's lawyers who can hopefully help you. So Jeanette Robinson, Jeanette Ramos, or Lucille Robinson? Wes Ruiz? Wes Ruiz? Khadija Khan?
Good evening, and thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to testify here this evening. My name is Wes Ruiz. I'm a tenant organizer with Tenants and Neighbors, a citywide tenant advocacy organization that works to empower tenants and preserve affordable housing in New York. I was born and raised in the Bronx, and I have lived in rent stabilized housing all of my life. Recently, my family has endured unprecedented financial stress. Nearly all of our income comes from social security benefits. Recently, my mother was laid off from a job she's held for seven years, and my father had to undergo heart surgery. I myself am experiencing significant financial strain due to student loan debt after recently graduating from college. Rent regulated tenants experience the unpredictability of life just like everyone else does. However, our experiences can propel us further into financial hardship and increase our risk of losing our homes. Rent regulated tenants pay anywhere from 30% to 50% of their income towards rents alone, meaning many rent regulated tenants are considered extremely rent burdened. The Bronx alone is made up of 59% rent regulated units. Rent regulated housing is a crucial resource that allows moderate and low-income tenants to afford to live in New York City. In April, this April, New York Magazine ran an article entitled, "What is the Bronx Anyway?" The article suggested that the Bronx is currently a cultural dead zone of New York City. Once internationally famous as the birthplace of hip-hop, this history and the people who invented this highly influential musical genre are now too frequently erased from the conversation. This discourse characterizing the Bronx as stagnant is not new, and it operates under the assumption that only certain people's daily lives are considered productive and worth paying attention to. These conversations have been used recently to spur a surge of new development targeting the Bronx, and rents are increasing rapidly. Residents who have made the Bronx what it is today are feeling the pressure of displacement, and a rent increase will only accelerate the displacement process. It is imperative that the Rent Guidelines Board consider a rent rollback this year which would help keep rents of the Bronx from becoming unaffordable for so many. This would go a long way towards saving my community from despair and destruction. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Khadija Khan, then Josephine Rodriguez, and Carolyn Smith.
Good evening, thank you to the board. My name is Khadija Khanz. Hi. I work and live in Manhattan. I work with Tenants and Neighbors as well, as I work alongside Wes at Tenants and Neighbors. The cost of living in the city has increased drastically, and as many of the people here pointed out, the salaries have remained the same. I personally, as a young person trying to make my way in this city, I grew up here, I was born and raised here, and yet I can't live on my own and start my own life because of the increased cost of rent and other things in the city. A lot of my friends have made the decision to leave New York because of the high costs. I, at one point, lived, had my own apartment, lived with a roommate, and I was paying 3/4 of my income in rent. Currently, I live with my...
Hold on one sec. Okay, everyone. We welcome everyone to the hearing, but we really want to hear individual stories too. So thank you all for being here, this is an incredibly impressive turnout. Hello from last year. So again, please come in. We do want to hear you, but we want to hear individual stories. So please let us hear the individual stories of tenants. Please let us hear everyone's stories. Please let us hear everyone's individual stories. Again, you are heard, but... We are here to listen to your stories. We would very much like to allow Ms. Khan to continue. Okay, Ms. Khan.
So when I was living...
It's all the toll that you have. Okay, can I talk? Yeah, yes, Ms. Khan, thank you.
So when I was living on my own, a lot of people said that 1/3 of their income went into rent. I felt like 3/4 of my income went into rent. One of the most important things, like food, was something that I had to cut back on because I wasn't able to afford my rent as well as eat and electricity. Other costs came into consideration at that time. Currently, I'm now living with my family in a rent stabilized apartment, which was a former Mitchell Lama. I'm grateful for the neighborhood that I live in, but again, the rent costs are way too high. Right now, my building is, they're putting on more costs onto the rent, such as MCI's, which a lot of people have discussed today. I think one of the most important things to talk about MCI's though is the fact that they go on forever. So it's a very unfair situation for the tenant because even after the costs are paid for those repairs that there are so-called costs that they're, repairs that they're making, the tenant has to pay for that cost forever even after it's paid up. It may sound cliche, but the rent is way too high, and I feel that for RGB to grant a rent increase when so many people are already economically distressed, it wouldn't be fair. It wouldn't be wise either because of the fact that if all of us are just distressed with all the bills that we're going through, and we're not going to be able to pay the rent anyway, and it would just cause too much problems for everyone involved. I just wanted to say something in response to what the landlord said, which was that they didn't get that much of an increase last year, but during the Bloomberg years, we were reeling from increases that were extremely high, and so we're just trying to make up for all of those years. And also, I wanted to say something about the homelessness that we have in the city already. I personally would be homeless if I didn't have a family that I could lean on with my college debt and everything. with my college debt and everything else, that, all the other costs that would make things difficult. Sorry.
So, Ms. Khan, as you can tell, we have a lot, a lot of people. So, if you can finish up, please. Thank you.
Okay. So, the last part I wanted to say is that we're dealing with landlords that find every way possible to increase rents and charge excessive amounts of monies for small apartments that eventually become deregulated when they hit the $2,500 threshold. And still, there are people like myself who fail to make ends meet because of the serious lack of affordable housing. They're destabilizing many apartments, kicking a lot of rent-stabilized people out, and charging astronomical amounts for market apartments. It's just not fair, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
My name is Carolyn Smith. I'm the Vice President of 1199 Retirees. Okay, the reason why I came here. Okay, we're talking about the rent increases. I am not going to mention the name, but I live in the tallest towers in the Bronx. And we experienced, we experienced almost a 25% increase. We got the highest increase in the city of New York, and we fought loud, we fought hard for this. One of the things that I want to mention that has not been mentioned here, people are going to survive. Now, if you get that rent increase, you're going to have multiple families living in one apartment. And that's going to create a health hazard when you have situations like that. And we do, I'm not mentioning where, but we do have places where you had two and three families trying to live in a two-bedroom apartment, but they have no choice. One of the things you're also going to have is, you're going to have people living wherever they can live. They're going to be living under tunnels. Like, I was shocked when I was in Florida and saw people with tents. This is what you're going to have here in New York City. And instead of making your money, you're going to be losing it because foreigners and different people are going to see where our condition's here because the rent is going to be escalated. We're going to be looking like the third-world countries overseas. That's how we're going to be looking, and nobody's going to want to come here. Okay. Now, I found out statistically, we got 70,000 retirees or people who stand a chance of being homeless. And guess what? You don't have that many shelters. So, they're going to go somewhere. And you don't have enough police to stop them. And then the other thing is, you can put out your dispossess, but I bet you won't get your money.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If anyone has an empty chair next to you, please raise your hand. We want to find seats for as many people as possible. So, if anyone has an empty, empty chair next to you. Empty chair next to you. So, folks, you can see some, you can see some empty chairs if you want to fill in. So, everyone go where there's a, where there's a raised hand. So, our next people to testify will be Josephine Rodriguez, Carolyn Waring, Patricia Edmiston. It says it on here. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's great. I think she's telling people what's in front of her.
Good evening, board. My name is Josephine Rodriguez, and I live at 85 Strong Street, Bronx, New York. I've been a tenant there for 31 years. I have been employed for 31 years also. Due to mismanagement on, let's say, mismanagement through my job, we have not gotten increase for seven years. So therefore, the rents go up and the salaries stay the same. We have tenants in our buildings that are suffering from this increase. Now, the biggest problem we're having in our building is that the landlords, for some reason, tend to hide what they do. They have reconstructed apartments, changed kitchens to bedrooms, put kitchens in the living rooms, and then they'll say, "We're going to collect for a two-bedroom apartment." Now, that's happening presently in my area, in the Kingsbridge area. They get away with murder, and yet they want this increase? Meanwhile, you have tenants that are suffering and being intimidated because they don't take off for work for when they want to do repairs, the landlords. And when they do, they don't find the cause of the problem, and then they apply to MCI to get the increases, which I think personally, MCI should be stopped. They should not be applying for grants. The landlords bought these properties. The homeowners wanted these properties, yet they don't want to maintain them. They want everybody else to give them money to maintain them while the, while the tenants suffer. The repairs are not being done properly, and the buildings are falling apart. And to only find out that we found out about the reconstruction of each, each building was because there was a shutdown in gas. It turned out, we're turning off the gas. They were, they were finagling, and they got no building permits. They got no, what was it? Construction permits. So, it goes on and on and on and on. Yet, they want increases. I think this board should not give them any raises. And the recession rights? I'm a single parent. My daughter is a college student. When she finishes college, she's not going to have a place to live. And they want to take away the recession rights? No. They should not do that.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Rodriguez. Carolyn, Carolyn Waring, then Patricia Edmiston and Marilyn Ringel.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Edmiston. I've been a resident of the Bronx for about 23 years. I reside at 930 Grand Concourse. I'm here listening to some of the landlords. The board needs to consider that this is going to become a human rights problem. Most of the tenants in the rent-stabilized apartments are senior citizens. We have sent our children to school. I have sent my two children to college. I have a grandson now that I'm trying to help send to college so he doesn't end up with a $200,000 debt. I don't want to have to ask my children when the rent keeps going up. Mommy needs money. I'm an independent female mother. I want to take care of myself. My children take care of their family. That's the way I've raised them. The MCI cost is ridiculous. I was elated with the 2% increase. I said, "Holy Father, amen." And then the landlord came up with MCI costs fixing elevators that don't even work. And it's DHCR allowed them to do the MCI costs on elevators that do not work. But the main concern I have is the human rights issue. We don't have, who wants to live in a shelter? Who really wants to go to a senior citizen home? I don't. I'm accustomed to living fairly well. But if you keep it up, I'm going to have to go somewhere, and I don't want to go anywhere. So, on behalf of people in rent-stabilized apartments, on the senior citizens of this country and this state who have worked all of their lives to make revisions for their families, we need to be considered in our age so that we can live comfortably and don't have to worry about adding two and two is four. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Waring. Carolyn Waring, then Marilyn Ringel, and Carol Walter, Ms. Waring. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say one thing before I say this over here. I can't get my teeth because I got to help my grandson pay his rent. So, I don't want my grandson homeless, so you're going to have to hear me speak like this. And I'm embarrassed to come out here and do this, but it's so important I have to do it. My name is Carolyn Waring, and I'm a member of Banana Kelly Resident Council. I live in 924 Kelly Street. For the last, I've lived there since 1969. In 2012, my building and four others on the block were rehabbed by the management company. For myself right now, I'm not in jeopardy of losing my home. I cannot say that for my grandson, my daughter, several friends, and for thousands of other people who are, most of whom pay more than half of their monthly income in rent. Although on a fixed income myself, I'm faced with the choice of seeing my family go hungry, be homeless, or share my limited income with them. I'm also a retiree from 1199. My grandson, I have a grandson. He has a $10-an-hour job that works him part-time. He has a $1,000 a month rent, plus he's taking care of a six-year-old daughter that he pays support for. Where's the fairness for him and thousands of others who are in that same condition? For decades, landlords have continually increased rents by huge percentages every year. Then there are the fees they added on. MCI fees. If you buy a refrigerator, you're going to pay for the refrigerator sometime. But if he puts it in your apartment, you'll pay for the $200 refrigerator. You'll pay for 25 years. Air-conditioning fees. I bought the air conditioner. I pay Con Edison. Why do I have to pay air-conditioning fees? Major capital repairs, vacancy comes... Wait a minute, I can't see. Why are we paying for these fees when there's no limit to them? Okay. What we got? Still, okay, MCI fees in the buildings. And the buildings we live in are still substandard. Slapping paint on the wall, fixing a hole is not major capital improvement. It's just not. Still, the landlords are asking for more. Open your books. Let's see what you're spending the money on, what you're really spending the money on. 25% of rent-stabil, 25% of rent-stabilized rents are preferential rents, as reported by HCR, which shows that, which, man, you're doing things wrong, okay? Which shows that owners often don't rent for the legal regulated rent that is supposed to be rented for. Landlords claim they have enormous amounts of bills to justify high rent increases. What you paying, what you paying on? Okay. Years of increases have left tenants homeless and over rent burdened. I'm honestly, humbly begging for a rent rollback. Or, at the very least, a zero, zero rent increase. Please, give us tenants a chance to live, a chance to survive in this great big city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waring. Thank you so much. Marilyn, Marilyn Ringel. Ma'am, we really have so many people. We have an interpreter. I don't know that we have the ability to do simultaneous interpretation, and I'm so sorry. We do have an interpreter here, and I wish we could do that. You're totally right. I wish we could do that. We have, unfortunately, a very small budget, but thank you for raising it. We have, we have an interpreter here for anyone who needs, anyone who's testifying. Uh, yeah, could the interpreter? Kate? Okay. Ms. Ringel? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Carol Walter, tenant at 930 Grand Concourse. I've, I'm a retired public school teacher of 12 and 1/2 years. It's unfortunate that, as a senior citizen, that we are paying MCI when we are on a fixed income. The salaries don't go up. The rent goes up. The landlord is cheap, uses cheap materials. They give us a stove that's supposed to be new. It is falling apart, and I'm falling apart as it is. They, the paint is not properly painted. We have a lot, I've had leaks in my apartment that I've lived in for 35 years. Every year, I've had a leak in the same area in my bedroom. We got an engineer this year or last year, and she informed us that there have been leaks, and the leaks are still ongoing. We have new electrical devices, and we're going to be paying for that. We're paying right now for an elevator that is constantly not in use. It breaks down. People have gotten stuck on the elevator. We, as senior citizens, we as all people, should not have to live like this, paying exorbitant rent prices. Landlords are living off the fat of the land, and they're still doing what they want to do. I don't care what anyone says, and it's not right. It's time that we start living the way we should be living and like we used to live years ago. This is supposed to be 2015? Well, it's the worst ever.
Thank you for your testimony. Hold on one second. If you could let everyone know that you're here, just to make sure.
Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Si hay personas interesadas en dar su testimonio en español, yo soy la intérprete y estoy aquí para apoyarles. Pero por favor, si quieren dar su testimonio, tienen que pasar afuera, inscribirse en la mesa de afuera, y este, mencionar ahí en la mesa que van a querer interpretación. Okay? De español a inglés. Hoy día no hay interpretación de inglés a español. So, for the English speakers, I was just mentioning that we have interpretation services from Spanish to English today for those that wish to give their testimony from Spanish into English. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good, okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Marilyn Ringel. I'm a native Bronx girl, and I'm a registered nurse. After I graduated college, I moved to Manhattan. I lived in the Village, and I currently live in Murray Hill. I came up here this evening because I felt it was important for me to have a chance to voice my opinion. I currently live in a studio apartment. I would like to live in a one-bedroom. I can't afford to do it, even on a nurse's salary. And I want to be able to pay my food bills, have money for my retirement. I'm not looking for anyone to help me out. I want to be able to be self-sufficient. My bed is in my living room, and it's been like that for the past 20 years. I just honestly cannot afford to move. I also want to tell you, having worked in home care and visited patients in their homes, it's very sad to visit someone who's in a fifth or a sixth-floor walk-up or fourth-floor walk-up, or a young person or an older person who's disabled. They are stuck in their apartments. They cannot afford to move. Even if they wanted to live in a building with an elevator, they can't afford to move. And to be honest with you, you, all of us, either know somebody or one day will know somebody, or it can happen to anybody in an instant where you lose the ability to ambulate, you're not able to get downstairs, and you cannot afford to move. It is heartbreaking, and it's, I'm saying that as a professional nurse. And I really implore you, when you make this decision that's coming up shortly, to really think about it. I know there was a landlord here that made a comment about how people don't pay their rent. Well, I do pay my rent, and I am a model tenant in my building. I don't cause damage, and I do the right thing. But I'm, but I'm one of the few people left. Now, I'll be honest. I'm fortunate because my super people do not harass me. I know what my rights are. But there are people in this city who are scared. They don't know what their rights are. But we really need to look at... We, I'm part of the middle class. If you don't have a middle class, you don't have a city. Okay, we're working people, teachers, nurses, people who work... Okay, we're working people, teachers, nurses, people who work in the service industry. Not everybody, I just want to say one thing, there's a myth, they think everyone who lives in Manhattan is wealthy. That is not true. It absolutely isn't true, and I'm proof of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, the next people, the next people in line are Jeannie Dubnow, Eric Henry, and Shahn Prakash. Jeannie Dubnow, Eric Henry, Shahn Prakash. Yes, sir? Shahn, Jeannie Dubnow? Uh, Jeannie Dubnow? Is that Jeannie? So, you're after Jeannie Dubnow. You're next after Jeannie Dubnow. Is Jeannie Dubnow here? So, Jeannie, come on up.
Okay. Hello? Okay, my name is Jeannie Dubnow. I've testified here many, many, many years. I'm with RENA, that's Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights. The reason we're here tonight is because we're all working people, and we cannot come during the day. So, we're happy to come to the Bronx and to be able to testify. Now, I think everybody sitting in front of me knows damn well what the laws are, knows damn well what the facts are. You're not sitting here to hear the facts because you have the facts. I'm appealing to the public members because I know that the tenant members are on our side, and I know the landlords are against it. It's you people, the public members, that are going to make the decision here. Now, I have heard Harvey Epstein say before, and I've said it many times, and others have, "To the landlords, when they get up and they cry, go and try to get a hardship increase." You've got the right to raise the rent of your tenants if you're not making a profit. So, forget about all that stupid testimony of the landlords crying about how they don't have enough money. Now, we are living in a city and a state that is governed by real estate. We see what's happening in Albany, and that you can't separate what's happening in Albany from what's happening here in the RGB. Because Albany is screwing the tenants, except for a few heroic lawmakers, a few of them. The rest of them are in the pocket of real estate. They're bought, Cuomo is bought, Scellos was bought, Sheldon was bought, and many, many others were bought. That's why we have the MCI's, everybody. That's why we still have vacancy decontrol. The governor is refusing, now, we are going to have a situation in New York City where we are going to not, this is going to be a crisis of such enormous proportions that we're not going to be able to see, things are going to change. Things are going to change drastically because I'm telling you now that if groups like the Rent Guidelines Board does not do the right thing, politically I'm talking, you know what the law, you know what the facts are. Do the right thing. At least you guys can do a rollback, which would help the tenants. That doesn't mean that Albany will take care of anything. Albany will, I doubt very much. Because this year, more than ever before, people have been going to Albany, getting arrested, including me. I had to go back to Albany today. Now, this is not a situation that continues. It cannot. People are fed up, up to here.
Ms. Dubnow, we hear you, and we see this. Thank you so much for your testimony.
It's up to you. It's up to you.